Good evening ladies and gentlemen, members. Welcome to Emmerdale Town Council's meeting, Wednesday 5th of August. Can everybody hear me clearly enough?
Very well.
Do you want me to use mic? You're all okay, yeah?
Yeah, I'm using my mic.
Oh, no, no. No, that's it. No, let's see.
No, we're down after.
Oh, yeah, no, don't, no.
We're talking about the market.
Yeah, yes, no problem.
We're talking about the market.
Okay. So, yeah, they need to know the purpose of that.
When I tell it, look, I've got it done, I hope. But I'm just waiting if it don't get done.
Yeah. I thank you all for your individual efforts and I recognise that. I'm very mindful that your individuals are not recognised by the wider community. But also, I do a lot of work down south, I'm very aware there's a lot, the world's, there's a lot of opportunity out there to exploit that. And I'm not asking you to do more work, it's about engaging with the modern world and how community stuff works now, to help you with that. And that's why, let's get into the 21st century. All the work you're doing is amazing, it's brilliant, that's, thank you, thank you, thank you. And it's just state change from before. Um, but I still think there's a lot catching up we can do.
If I just pass on to stand for another question. Just one last thing from our, the public get invited to this meeting, they're not going to be. They're supposed to be not going to be.
I'm saying.
They're not, if they're interested, they could be here.
No, well, that's exactly where I was, there's something broken here. And we can sort of say, well, we opened the doors and they didn't come, we need to get out there and somehow.
But it's like, it's like we wasn't doing as job cock, we were just going to tell us. But you don't think.
To be honest, most people have a fairly low opinion. And that's from years of what's happened before you, it's nothing to do with you, it's history.
It's like, don't forget, they've got a big shop around here, as you know. Labour Party, well, ever since I was born, it's been like, they've just knocked them. And that hit, they still haven't got over the shop yet, I'll tell you that now.
Yeah.
And that, they're trying to pull us to pieces as much as they can.
I think one of, one of the things here, Mark, I think, I take your point on that, and I think we'll all agree. We need to try a little bit harder to engage different members of society, teenagers, these in their twenties, and other people, involve public football clubs and other organisations, let's try and get more newsletters out. But the thing is, it's been difficult since end of February or March, as long as it's COVID-19. But if we can all take that on board and try and get the message across to different members of society, I think it will help, it will help us all, because at the end of the day, that's what the council is here for, and I think we've all agreed on that. If I can just pass on to councillor, honestly, just to.
Cheers, Mr Chairman. Hi, Mark, I recognise you there, mate. It's been that long since I've seen you. Eh, well, I really want to qualify district councillor position, I mean, obviously I'm district councillor and I've been a district councillor since 2008. First in the pitch in my life, and I know Jean's been on district. And I, and I understand what you're saying, but it ain't about accolades or what happens, but I, I remember being in this chamber, I remember when I was running independent council in West End Labour, and we didn't get our working. Um, in relation to communications, for example, I've got my own district council page, which I put stuff on the group's, and I've got social media. I get phone calls everywhere, I've had three tonight, uh, since I finished my final job. People asking me to work for them, uh, private messaging on Facebook, uh, the physics on a weekend, uh, Saturdays and Sundays, like most of my colleagues go around this table. So what happens is a lot of people don't see a lot of what we do, but I'll tell you what we have done, that the previous administration did do, uh, for all the years and years. Working alongside Jimmy and some other councillors round this table, we've managed to identify that waiting for a district council on a period of time took grants and money from this community. And that's to improve it through the events of Kingford, Kingford South England, and diverted their monies elsewhere, which resulted in this area becoming dilapidated. And as a consequence of that, the local MP and the League of Wainbridge District Council in December of last year identified that they neglected this area for the last 20 or years. And so much so that this community now has got a share of a £10 million pot, which we're going to work together as every town council in Wainbridge, and we're going to improve our area to 3.3 million. So, so we're doing a lot of work, doing a lot of work actually, standing up in chambers, putting together opinions, working together as a town council. But it worked both ways, because it don't matter, and I think I put something safe about it around this table, it don't matter if I'm out socially, uh, which at the moment, like most people, is non-existent because of COVID. But when I'm out socially, or, for example, uh, last Friday, I walked through the old bank in my life, yeah? And this couple stopped and said, look, I don't want to bother you, but I need to talk to you about this. And we took it down, and we stopped to listen, we couldn't test it, and it would say again. So we are out here, Mark, you know what I mean, we are doing what we can do, mate, we're trying our best. And I think the other thing is just to qualify what, uh, councillor equity does say. There's a fraternity, I know there's not, I don't care what people like now, I try and do my best, and I think as individuals, that I just, this really independent town council, you know, which has never been known to serve you. But I take on board what you said, and I'm sure we'll try to test it, mate, give you a look.
But, like I say, what you're doing individually is amazing, I'm getting no sense of coherence of strategy that actively addresses where the problems are. Now, like I say, it's not about you working harder, it's getting more value for that recognition for what you're doing. You need to get out there. I'm not sure why it's broken, there's obviously a disconnect between what's happening here and the community.
What we do react, because if I've got a problem around here, it's a district problem, I'm going to deal. Yeah? If it's a problem that I think that, you know, is on the place where you are, or it's a problem on a different wall, then we need to do it, you know, it's off the top of our mind, yeah? And, and pass on this, but so, we do communicate now, we really do, we, you know? And, and there's some new people around here, it's the first time they've been in council, got to do it, but then, not necessarily to arrive, but they're just doing an excellent job, which is, you know, we, we try, we are trying our best, and I just think, we, we members of the public are listening out, you know, you know? They need to realise that we're still in our infancy, we've been here 18 months. And about things, and it's not a thing that I can do, especially with Jean and Jean during COVID crisis and relationships and everything. The public sells you, you're kind, yeah? And, and what I'm saying, Mark, is inevitably, we have, we get people who aren't like me, you know, like all of us, who don't, you know, uh, but I think everyone's at one of these places, ours is made for us, and it's made for us, isn't it?
Chair, I think you say, I've been known since political, I believe, and you're always going to get that. We're always going to get that, but so, you know, we can't expect anything different, Mark, to be fair. But we'll keep, we'll, we, let people do the worst and we'll do our best, that's all I can say.
So if I finish up on that now, I think we've got your answer to two, number two question, so to speak, which is noted. Uh, but your, your answer to question number one, Mark, regarding public question time, when a council section agenda, you cannot have any other business, you can't open it to, I know that, or this procedure, is that right? So, you know, because if you, if you admit to any other business, then your agenda could be hard.
But the whole time, public question time is in effect in your business, isn't it?
Well, it is, but I'm saying it does start at front, and it's your first one that's on, but some questions still aren't answered.
Eric, can I have a chat more, I mean, this coach point, it's the first, is that right, Eric?
The reason the public part is at the beginning of the meeting is so that any items on the agenda of members of council can then hear the views of the public, so that then, when the item of business comes up on the front of the meeting, they can make an informed decision, given what the public say. As to what the chairman said about any other business, should we speak, you can have any other business. I think what the chairman's giving that all is that it would be unlawful to then make any decisions about any other business. So effectively, it's unlawful, but actually, it isn't unlawful. Long story short, it's better not to have it for those reasons.
You just told me full gauge of the, you know, for your agenda, that could be a lot harder. Yes, councillor, all right.
Right, I like the problem, it's a kind of a, it's very awkward here, Mark. This is the hardest area without that. I would want you to got more drug problems in this area than any other area. The apartment's bad, and that doesn't help. But we've had a way of the town council here for many, many years. And in my ways, they haven't helped, they haven't helped the town. You know, we're, at least we're trying, and I strongly believe slowly, we're getting there. But it's going to take time. People don't realise what we've achieved in such a short time, without that. That's all I've got to say, but just think what I've said.
Thank you for that, councillor, that took the move on then to item number four. Town council meetings considered within minutes of the council meeting, um, 8th of July 2020. Can I move them on this, yeah? Item number five, correspondence, the town clerk to report in correspondence in respect of the following. A, a letter of thanks from West End Terrace Football Club.
My pleasure, Chair. Um, I'd like to thank you, your staff, and the town councillors for the help and support that has been afforded to our community group and the community as a whole in these unprecedented times. As with most small businesses and community groups, West End Terrace FC has been hard hit by the club's circumstances. It was touching though as to whether we could get the club back on its feet as we have had to cancel our annual fundraising event, as well as cancelling all member subscriptions. The generous offer to remove pitch rental fees for the 2020-21 season has been instrumental to our efforts to start the club up for the coming season. It has been reported to us that we are able to return to some sort of training as soon as possible. The acceptance of our request to use the Sunday facilities to run safe and organised training sessions has been incredibly well received by the club and landowners, as was the news that the costs would be reduced for our usage. It has also been fantastic to see the community engagement from the town councillors during the lockdown period. Bringing smiles to the fences and meaning in the community with their interactions, as well as ensuring the aged and vulnerable within the community, that our potmills provided and delivered have been unbelievably generous. On behalf of West End Terrace FC and all the team members, I want the council to record our thanks for your support in these difficult times. The town council seem to be very community orientated and engaging, while the council staff have been very accommodating, understanding and supportive. Yours, thank you, good luck. My pleasure, Chair, there's one more item request for us, for a couple of things, uh, one, I won't mention their name, because I've permission from the chair to mention their name, it's from a couple of things there, and they said to me, and saying, maybe thank you for the lovely ones we have been, so we have been having delivered to us. Thanks to the wonderful staff, I much appreciate it.
And I think they've been at least a good year down there. Uh, late, uh, capital, staff down there, members and backing up, gallows, just by his, maz, yes, he, uh, Jim, who has, he has. Can you send me some?
Do me, do me, just asking, can you speak up a little bit for the zoo?
Yeah. Can you be more exact, matey? Is that okay? So if we're speaking, we can speak up everybody, you know, we're using, right? So I've removed on then, uh, to item number six, grant funding. Do you consider requests for grant funding from A, every town football club?
Mr Chairman, it's a grant application for £1,000 for new kits and training costs.
Uh, I'm, I'm, what members, uh, said with this, I think the training costs, what we have waived the pitch fees this year, and we've reduced, has to do with.
I think that's what it's about.
Well, I, Mr Chairman, I just like the way we're, we're doing it, how we try to get all the results of the football club. Well, what we're doing, they have the records and they have the meetings, but since, Mark, within the marks, they've, they've been able to do this. They've not been able to meet like they are. So, you know, it's, it's, it's last four months, and it's been a, five months now. Uh, you know, the funds are really depleted in the down, and lots of people are not, are not working. Some are playing, a lot of them only getting 80% of their wages, so, you know, it's.
I almost think, like, it's the easiest thing to work for, you know?
Yeah, I mean, what you've got to reflect, Mark, mate, is that, you know, last year, uh, or last season, we gave West End Terrace, we had, we gave Kingsley Boys grants, this year we've given members of mine as well for, for the world, I think he was granted. So I think it's only fair that we consider giving this football club, well, giving this football club some funding, whether it's a thousand pounds, I was waiting to you know. Yes, yeah.
This is the team, right?
Yes, they've got about six to seven teams, I think.
I, I bet you, yeah. Um, I just want to say what I saw, you know? Uh, the opportunities for the, for, uh, like I said, you're, you're suffering a lot from that, it's probably going to be easy. But what I saw, it has to be, for me, it's, it's called, you know, you know.
So, yes, we.
And you have to give it to them, for the three down.
Yeah, uh, West End Terrace applied for, we need £2,000, £1,000. Junior section applied for, for a grant, and we gave them £2,000, they came back last year, this will name 19, so that's two years applying with that. Kingsley Boys applied for a thousand pounds, we've got a thousand pounds, and we've got a five hundred pounds. The reason why Kingsley Boys got that support is because of a desperate league blood price on the changing rooms, a lot of the leaders were waiting for downs, and because of our, now, financial, they managed to resolve, we've got, we've got, we've got track, because if we hadn't to give that term, Kingsley Boys would have fallen. So I think everybody realises that it's.
So this is the first time, right?
Uh, with, with this council, yes.
So I think the last, others have had a thousand pounds, and I would say, I would, I would, probably given a thousand pounds.
Townsfolk records?
Yeah, I'd like to be nervous. Talk about it next time, at least the hologram chart, if we're going to pay a way back with all the teams. Everybody's a big problem, we call them. You know? Who's talking about? You can't just stick this in your mouth and want to talk about it, you want to rattle it, telling us what's what, why they want the money.
For the kit.
Well, you've said it's what pitch fees.
Can you tell me a kit or what?
No, kids and.
Football kits and pitch fees. I mean, for a decent kit, you can qualify for a pound.
Yeah, yes.
And they have got, like Ian said, they have got seven or eight football teams from youngsters, they've got two ladies teams, so they run out way through, like just to bolster the pool.
Can I ask again what they asked for?
They asked for a thousand pounds, which is what, which we've said, we reflect those, what we did. Kingsley Boys, slightly more than that last year, and we did.
And they haven't, and down before, is that right?
No, they haven't, they haven't done it before.
Well, can we cut that down to 500? And send it to 500? And see what that does for them.
I think the, the people that take two thousand pounds.
That will last you until court.
The thing is though, if you do that, and, and, you know, I'm aware of that, but thinking about how things are in the middle, the numbers are going up, because it's now, it's fake, and I'm thinking about it, it seems weird, because if we don't have another lockdown, that kit that are going to buy, obviously, is it going to be, you know, is it going to be the same thing, whether they're going to be, oh, the four, four month, five month?
Well, they haven't been down, Jean, they haven't been down, we've got different teams, so.
But I'm just thinking about.
We get away, what they usually do each season is buy a new set of socks or, or sets of shirts, because, because the colours are yellow and black, and they're in front, under sevens, eights, tens, twelve, twelve, mate, and they all have the same black tie, Legion Army, not even clothed. So they do that, uh, well, they're all part of that.
Does any, does anybody, is there any, any, any support, you know, advertising, shirts and things like that, do they do too on that?
I think the thing is with, with that issue is that, you know, the, the people who took anything, it's everything, yeah? The issue, so obviously they're, you know, they're just, they're just very keen.
Yeah.
So I've got, I've got a proposal then, councillor, if, if, if you want to progress, councillor has proposed five hundred pounds, yeah?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
I've got a second, yeah? I'll, I'll roll over that, I've got me, I've got an alternative proposal, so that's, so we've got four here, I've got an alternative yesterday. You, you have to, so let's put it to a vote, and councillor, the door, the members have said, 500 pounds, and we all in favour of 500 pounds. And like I said, they're, they're struggling and they want to come back, so they're going to take it again, yeah?
And, and just very much, Chair, give the last all too much you can, and I think it's certainly, and, and in my thought of me, um, what we've got in the country as well, it's, it's such a, a problem, it's a problem.
The 200, the 250 pounds of eight, 200 miners well paid, and the 12, we're just one football team. This is probably about sevens, really, it goes into their fund, so, you know, it, it substantiates the, the increase, yeah?
Yeah.
So is anybody against this at this point, no, might be against that, so that's, that's, that's kind of the, 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 yeah? Ian, I think it's, it's a party, it's, I think it's a party.
Yes, and when I went to that meeting, we, I'm a chap, I'm a chap, I suggested to the coach, who contacts me, uh, said in the room that we're going for the, 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 uh, but, but contacted Max, and, 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 unfortunately, it's, 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 uh, so I was going to get my conclusion, so is, is aware of the council, yeah?
I, I've just, just got a signal that we, there's people struggling to raise on Facebook, or, so if we can all speak up, would that be better? If we can all speak up here, uh, I mean, obviously, we've got an issue with Mike passing back down, but if we can all speak up, I think, okay, there is, uh, so ju, just to clarify then, that every, all members are in favour, they're giving it down, uh, 500 pounds, and then ob, obviously, we're doing a bit of, as in, like, like you have said, we're going to, like, for council.
I'll put in the grant application, yeah?
So if we, we can move on then, and Mr, next item on the agenda, uh, which is item number six, three, shift culture development. And they, they replied for a grant, and I said, I have.
Thousand pounds, £1,000, Chair, if you could.
Can I, 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 I've been a part of the business, you know, I've been a student before.
We, we have had an application last year, probably, I believe, and the cost, uh, the way it was presented, I think that's an older, that would not, because of the way it was presented, we, we weren't favourable for supporting this, because the coaches that run this don't get paid, and they charge subscriptions, and so if it's going to any fund, we have to be mindful, it's a public person, you know, uh, or what we're giving out, right, so.
To buy extra equipment, smaller goals, different footballs from this.
Don't make this football, so it's not.
I think, I think the thing is with this, we're very closely linked to every town. And we provide goalposts on Ashford, and we've got all the wells, so realistically, you know, can be interchanged with the goalposts, the different teams, and over the town, we've got, got the facilities up on Ifield now. Uh, and, and like I said, they are getting paid, they are charging these kids a fee to be coached by, because the semi-professional coaches, so, you know, for all it is a business, then, you know, to my mind, we've got to be careful. We're public persons, uh, so what we do, we don't want to criticize, you know? Probably could, we could help them later on with some fundraising, if they want to have a tight, I don't quite understand, gig or some fundraising, but when, when things turn down. So I mean, it, you know, so, so do you have any proposals to defer this, any proposals to reject it?
I think it's, uh, it's, uh, like you said, we're being professional, I think, so.
Mr Public Moyn.
Rejecting that. I, I'd reject it, I guess, I realize, but my thing is, it's professional, but like you said, the advice, we can't do fundraising, we do accept the campaign.
Interchange that equipment, you know, to the town, like. So, so basically, feelings that we have here tonight is that, that members are not favorable, that can be disrupted by the, yeah?
Correct.
So they can, they can have a vote on that, then, yeah? We are, I would say, rejecting this application, yeah? Like I said, we've got to be mindful, yeah? So, thank you for letting me know that, Alan.
Mr Chairman, so, so why would we reject it, I guess, yeah?
Yeah, we, we just put down this professional competition in this, that's how they charge subscriptions, you know? You, you're other teams, and you might as well, uh, West End Terrace, they're on the walls, and whenever it comes to behaviour, it goes into this. You know, because they are going to, to, to enter the town. I can't see why they can't do it very good, you know, I mean, the same coaches, it's going to, don't try. We just don't want to make football in a spot either, you know, we're, 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 yeah? So if we move on to item number seven, allotments, to consider review the following, A, and the following, which is A, locks. So part of the band over to you, Owen, uh, on locks.
Uh, thank you, Mr Chairman, yeah, uh, over the past two weeks, uh, locks have been a bit of an issue, uh, and, uh, I just think we have to decide what the members want to do on this, because, to be frank, some members have got no opinions about locks, about the locks, and some have got others. And so obviously, so the council, it's, I know, you've got some.
They're remembering the lock, so it looks every side, I think, please, just for the year, if you meant to make actual life, we never did it, we never put it into practice. But when you come by, four or five locks for Grove Lane, four or five locks for Springfield as an example, and then West End, if one of those locks breaks, or it gets stolen or locked up, uh, then we've got something to replace it, straight away without replacing the keys, they've already got the keys for it. Five locks should last us how long? Five, six, seven, eight years. At the moment, if we're losing a lock or a lock breaks, we're having to change lock, and we're having to get 50 or 60 keys. On Grove Lane allotments, it's 90 keys, because there's 90 allotments on that. So, yeah, it might cost a few hundred pounds to put it into practice if they do one allotment at a time, but the amount of times that security's having to go out, and we're getting phone calls on a weekend, you know, somebody's taking, taking locks, somebody's broken the lock. Uh, I just.
Can I, can I on with that, Jean?
I just think that we'd be better off looking at buying five, dip, five locks all the same for each site, so that if something goes wrong with it, we put another lock on the, the ball that, that key. Not, not all the same, so, so that if, you don't want to be doing it that West End's got, got key to get it to Grove Lane. They've got to be different, but I'm sure there'll be a firm, Mark, we'll be able to provide that.
Mr Chairman, can I just remind those members that are allotment holders, you can't take part in this event, this item of business.
So that's what you are, um, don't put me out.
I would do if I could have told what, uh, what's wrong with this way.
Councillor, I'm afraid you can't speak inside this, but it's unlawful.
Yeah, I'm saying, I've had a section of tips about, it's not, it's fine.
Councillor, you are not allowed to say one word about it.
So if I, just, my sorry to councillor, will you let?
Just, just to add, as you're, I see where you're coming from, can we not get five separate combination locks? So each, uh, allotment, or the, all the combinations?
We've, we've tried that in, our security's tried that, and what's happening with combination locks, because they're not welded on, they're, they're taking combination locks, or if some, if, if a wrong person gets the combination, they'll lend themselves in and it's stuck being stolen, you know?
Yeah, yeah, all right, Mr Chairman, yeah.
So, I, I think, you know, discussing it with some of other members, uh, and I apologize to, to you that's got allotments, you know, that can't take part in this, but I don't think the sensible thing to do is to do, we each allotment one at a time, let's get five locks that, that's exactly the same, so if we lose one, there's still got a key to get it, or to replace it, and if that lasts us 10 years, we're laughing. Might cost us a few hundred pounds, but I think it's the way forward, because if, if a lock breaks on, uh, Grove Lane, we're 90 of the lotments, say, affects 80 people on Sunday, and we can't lock it, or if we put another lock on, you've got 80 people that can't go in on Monday to feed the, the livestock, or to attend to the plants.
So, Chair, what about, uh, welding it on, I thought there was some set of, uh?
We are, we are welding them on, Jean, we do weld them on, so what we can do, if it's one that's welded on that breaks, we can unweld it and weld a new one back on, but it'll be the same lock, and we don't have to go through a process again, give 170 keys out every day. So, it's.
There's no easy answer for this, there's no easy answer for this.
Well, I think, I, I mean, I think, and I have spoke to one or two of you, like, that I think that's way forward. Let's, let's try it on, on Grove Lane or one of other allotments first. Probably West End, I think, we've had trouble up, up there, spot, you know, locks breaking and, uh, and changing combination locks. So if we can try this, if we can put a new lock on, let, let's invest and, and get a decent lock, and have three or four reserve locks that, that use that same key, what, once we've handed keys out, because we're forever charging, you know, three or four pounds. that, that use that same key, once, once we've handed keys out, because we're forever charging, you know, three or four pounds, and then don't forget, if the lock breaks, and it's down to, to our fault, we have to then get seventy keys out at three pound a piece, which is defeating object, but if we've got two or three locks, same combination, that's key, then we won't have this problem. So, I, I'm wit, I'm with to, to move forward with that, to, to, to ask Alan, if you can look at, look at that, move forward with security and share on that, yes?
That's approved, Mr. Chairman.
Alan, agree to that, Chris.
Yeah.
I think that's the way forward, that, that we have got a backup then, you know what I mean, we, we are without, you know, re-cutting another seventy keys every time the lock goes down. Yep, is that, are they in your standing?
No, I did, of course, that's not the problem, it's funny, they kind of said this, you know, it's not about that, you've told me I can't say anything, because I've got an allotment. Yeah, well, the chairman's got an allotment.
I understand, no, I haven't.
Oh, sorry.
It was just a kind of thing, it was just the item, the next item might even be, that's fine for those allotment holders, I'm sorry to see from the chairman, but on that one, it's to protect you, council, and the council.
So, do you want to defer this one, or do you want to approve it?
Approve it.
Move it forward, yeah?
We're doing it, do you care, that was a lot, didn't we?
Yeah, we've had some, we've had some real problems here tonight, and then when we've had to put another lock on it, obviously, we're getting phone calls, thirty phone calls on a morning, because people aren't got a key, they don't know what's happening to the lock, they've got to get in to see for the plant, they've got to get in to see for the livestock.
Chair, is there any problem of this mould in town? Is everything okay?
No, no, we, we have an issue, that's why it's on the agenda.
Oh, well.
Uh, it needs, it does need resolving and moving forward, like, I mean, the, the other councils has had this problem for the last ten, fifteen years.
Nice, and that was...
And, and I mean, all I'm saying is, if we buy five locks, there's not, that, that if one breaks down, they've still got same key to get in, put another lock on, we're not going to be faking it, yeah? So, okay.
So, what's, what, are you proposing then?
I'm proposing that we run with this, we get five locks for each site, over a period of time, and then if one lock breaks, we've got another lock straight away, obviously, we could go down and put on. Our second one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are, are we all in favour, then, yeah? So, that, that's unanimous, yeah? Uh, item number seven again, allotments, a requesting place for a porter cabin, and a community allotment at Springfield allotments. Now, I do believe councillor Wilson can speak on this, Alan.
Yes, un- unless you have to have an allotment that backs on to this, uh, allotment, in which case you will have an interest, other than that, even members of allotment holders are free to speak about this, Mr. Chairman.
So, if I, you know, you're more familiar with this, councillor Wilson, so if I can, and I would...
People just ask me when I'm going to open my own allotment, because I've lost his alter of the game, and they go on about these, the porter cabin things, and, uh, they have got some info, but these porter cabins would be a lot cheaper than what I'm gonna get. So, I says, look, I can't argue about it, but send a letter in, which yes, you know, to see if we can have them, or, or do we have to go and buy these there, like?
Have, have you all seen?
But I just said this, just, just to further this, Jim, and what we've got to do, we do want to think, it's for disabled peo- youngsters, and mentally handicapped youngsters, and that's what it takes, you know, the full down, although it's a point, like, I have my...
So, there has been some pictures sent round, so, you know, obviously, you've seen these, how many porter cabins have they wanted, Stan?
I think he said two, Jim, for that, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, if, if I just go on to, to state to councillor much first, Alan?
Yeah, I mean, firstly, I have no objection to this, but wouldn't being structured like this, not, this, would be an issue with the, with the, with the, you know, that.
No, but it, they're not, they're not fair enough, I believe, but...
The night was coming, I do roll a little bit, Alan, because I do run the stories firm. Now, the motori-cabin, you know, the pilot, I wonder if the air starts coming off, if I'm just going? Now, I don't mind giving these lads a chance, but switches as porter cabin, what's the moment to do with it? And in twelve months, it'll look bloody disgrace, unless it's sorted out, you know, you can see all the air coming out of there. You know, I mean, I think far better if we ask for a grant, to do it together, but, you know...
Is that the actual porter cabin itself, or just...
That's the one.
Yeah. And this is all pilot, the ones that are feeling the air off, it's all done, it's on the...
Yeah, you can see it, lots of guy, it's already...
Yeah, I think, I think it, what, what his intentions are, is to repair that. Is, is Dean on Zoom?
Dean? So, the members, uh, Dean Darley, whose request is, he asked to join the meeting, he's on Zoom, so, I doubt if he wants to say anything, Dean, Dean Darley? He's looking to general, not responding, so...
Yeah, I think, I think his idea is, is, uh, you know, they're, they're, they're quite a, an upmarket, uh, group, they know what they're doing, and I think, obviously, when it could, if you don't put this on site, no, they will repair it, they won't put it on like that, and leave it to fall apart, you know, they, they are quite responsible.
They're all pilots, when the air goes, that's it, what do you get, so, and they all...
What his intention is, is, the, the bit, that you can see that's a bit damaged, is to replace those panels.
Yeah, if he's willing to repair it, I'm sure we can come to him and grant, to do it.
I think they would go, I don't know, because I've said it, seriously, they've got lions, right?
Yeah, yeah.
The fight, uh, councillor, about the opening of the porter cabin?
Yes, Dean.
It's a, it's a different structure, but we'll all have the big cladding, these, pilot, and then we'll, we'll put the paint, and it'll be, and it'll cost much, it'll take a long money on the road, yeah? And of course, councillor thinks about that, but I think, yes, that's true.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, it, like, I, I think councillor Wilson's worry were, you're gonna put it on, and then in a few months' time, once we got to winter, you know, you'd have problems with it falling apart, and then we'd be stuck to move it top, but...
The, the sack, well, we didn't have to do the off here, because we moved it from the spore, but also, we didn't keep it for the mates, and it's not, it wasn't very good.
Yeah, that's, I, I'm, I'm sure, yeah, that... Yeah, I did mention that, that I'm sure that, you know, any panels that, that want, want to replace it, you replace it, and you put it on once. I mean, vibes that I've got here, Dean, like, is everybody's in favour of that, and I think what Mr. Eccles said, he might even think of that sponsoring it for you.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind that at all, I wouldn't mind that at all, you know?
Yeah, I think, uh, you know, his, his vibes were that, you know, if you need, if you need a, a, a lift up, so to speak, then, you know, we, we'd help you that way as well, Dean, you're doing a good job down there, that's what, uh, uh, councillor Eccles means. So, if, if I can put it to, to vote, then, to make sure that we make these decisions correct, are we all in favour of that, yeah, to support Dean and this porter cabin?
How many, how many is a good one?
How many are putting on, Dean, two? Yeah, yeah, you've got, you've got our backing and permission, not a problem. Yeah, is there anybody against this proposal now? Nobody against it, so you're a hundred percent backing there, thank you. Uh, item number eight, storage unit, to consider purchasing a storage unit for plant machinery vehicles at Hendrick Water Park. Uh, once again, I think, there's been a circular, uh, sent round to everybody, and people looked at photographs prior to this.
Is it, is your photograph here?
It's, it's a, it's roughly about a fourteen, fifteen foot storage unit, uh, sixty foot long by thirty foot wide. Uh, it's, it's all in sections that can be stripped down, brought in, and then erected on site, and it'll, it'll fit well in compound that we've got, it'll, uh, cover all equipment that we've got, it'll make it safe, it's, they're all electric's in, once it's, uh, coupled up, it'll be all singing and dancing, and it can be alarmed to our main alarm system, and obviously, it'll do plant work in, in winter, when it, when they're all locked up inside. The thing is with this, the unit, I think it cost over thirty thousand pound, seven years ago, when it was purchased, it's, uh, a person that wants to, uh, be kept anonymous, that's, uh, made a good gesture to us, and if we go and strip it down, and, and bring it into park, we can have it for two thousand pound.
Mr. Chairman, can I just correct you on that, if the, if it's approved, if the transaction's approved, it goes through, it's a council procurement, then you couldn't remain anonymous, obviously.
Yeah, uh, well, we get a receipt for that, yeah, but what he's saying is, he, you know, he, 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 he wants to help Hendrick Town Council, our community.
Can I just say, is there any rate that's gonna be, uh, a, a, yes?
No, we...
Is it classed as a temporary building, or, I don't know?
No, it is not.
It's not classed as a temporary building, but because we've got tractors and equipment in it only, it's, it, it's classed as agricultural, and if we run a site that's over, uh, five hectares, I think it is, and it's three kilometres away from an airport, and it's not more than, is it twelve metres, twelve metres, we don't need one information for it.
Chair, I think this is a brilliant idea, and this building's for nothing, you'll never see a building like that again, because I've never seen one that's that cheap. But, we've also got to consider the fact of what's it gonna cost us for footings? And what's it gonna co- cost us for concrete base? And who's gonna do it? You know?
I'm sure that our down, down maintenance staff, councillor Eccles are quite capable of doing that.
So, are you telling me, Chair, the down maintenance are gonna do it?
Yes.
All right.
Yes, but we've got, we've got the machinery to do it, haven't we?
Yes, we are.
We've got the machinery to do it, uh, and I can't see a problem on that. Waterborders, you know, have been working down there on two occasions, for, for burst that we've had, and because that area were flooded, they've agreed to reboot surface, uh, once in compound, and resurface it, so the limestone that they're gonna bring in will serve as a, as a, help to service the base for that as well. So, you know, you, you...
Do you understand that, that you're still wanting?
You're not talking massive costs of bringing contractors in to put the base, the foundations in.
You're talking massive cost of a concrete clip, of that side. But I'm down. But...
How much?
I don't know, I haven't been through it, you know, I mean, I've thought of buildings looking like that, and obviously, you need a concrete clip. It's easy enough to work cubic yard, and how much it's gonna cost them.
But, Chair, it, but, Chair, the only thing for me, Alan, I'll have to get somebody to get some, that's not, they're not long.
Well, yeah, because...
There's not, not a lot.
But they're gonna do, as long as they do it, you know, that key then.
Well, that's what he's just said.
I don't know.
You, you're looking, you're looking at, at roughly, uh...
Just for cubic...
You're looking at fifteen to eighteen cubic concrete, which would be about twelve to fifteen hundred pound, depending on density and thickness, then.
Well, I think it'd cost a lot more than that, I...
Well, that's, that's, that's a nine inch pot steel base, and six inch pot centre, reinforced steel, so, that, that load of ten pound.
Well, I'll be interested to find out what it does cost in concrete.
So, the building is two thousand pound, it's up to you, do you want to approve it or move it? Or do you want to defer it, uh, until we get that, some, some costing for this place?
No, I think it's a fantastic price, all I want to know, the, uh, concrete clip and the footing will cost us.
With, with, with the steel, like, rough calculations that I've had, is between twelve and fifteen hundred pound.
Well, I think you're right, but I'm not gonna...
Well, I'm saying, do you want to defer this, then, until we get some costing for this base?
Well, obviously, we've got our own fitter down there, right? Some has blown away quickly, so we want to build it up, there's no mechanic that's working there, and this is gonna be a, a godsend, right? All I'm saying, price.
If that ring you in it?
Yeah, I, I've been very hopeful about a few months, I've spent it down at Water Park, I think this is fantastic, I think you're all, all, so, we've got the expertise on this. The price of the building is fantastic, I'm honest with you, and I understand the reason why we want it, and why we don't need it, because it's a lot of theft of agricultural stuff. Uh, but the only thing, that it is a minor concern, and I'm taking the advice from councillor Eccles, is the cost of putting this place down needs to be minimised, you know, that, that's the concern, but I've no, I've no knowledge of that, but...
The concrete that were laid in front of stage area from that gate, right up to where Lake is, and in front where Pedalons Run are, cost, it regions at about two thousand two hundred per year.
Correct.
And that is a lot bigger than this.
And that will let it in concrete, which would be over for this building.
Minimum four inch, go on, now.
Well, I said at least you want six inch.
Yeah, you will for this, but that would a minimum four inch, so, if you base it on that.
When, when does Indian need to know about the purchase, so if we've got time to get this, I'd go on, I'd go get some stuff, right?
I mean, surely we can get the building, store it in our yard, and then sort the base out, then we've got the building, and then nobody else can buy it.
Well, you need to, I mean, like I said, it's a gen- it's a generous offer, and, and I think that, that could be the point, you know, if we get the building, and then other ones can see what, what finances we are, and we are gonna have finances available, because there's, there's other activities that's, that's coming up, that we're not gonna be able to do on here, so we will have e- extra finance available to, you know, to move over to that, provided it's not classed as capital, Alan, so, I mean, that's your thought, uh...
I mean, what sort of price and stuff we're buying the building?
We've got to buy, because we sold two.
So...
Did I just ask you, Alan?
Yeah, sorry, Eric.
There'll be a little girder, it's, uh, sitting inside there, won't there?
Yeah, it's, it's got a, it's got a, a superstructure, steel girders all bolted together, and then it's got buildings, and cladded.
Are we quick to take that down, we've got machinery to take that down, these, these girders?
Yeah.
Top ones?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, are we gonna go now?
You're gonna, the chap, the chap, the owner of this has got a cherry picker.
Oh, well, that's great.
So, it's a platform...
Cherry, cherry, are we gonna hold girders, like, an old cherry picker, if you can get up there, take a bolt, like, etc, I don't know, I understand that.
Yeah, they'll lower them down, then, on the winch.
Right, so we, we've definitely got equipment to do it, and I'm, I'm just bothered about...
Well, the chap, the chap, the chap put this up himself.
Right, well, that's not a standard, that's a lot, yeah, yeah. And once the lads are all, like, you know...
Yeah, so, I mean, at the end of the day, once, you know, once, once we're ready, Alan will do a risk assessment for it, you know what I mean, so... So, basically, then, I think the vibes are here, that you're all in favour of purchasing this, and then look at finances, and, and get some quotes, just to make sure that we, we're okay with this base, yeah? Is that, is, are we all in favour of that, then, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I look, it's, uh... So, can, can we, can we, can we have a show, then, are we all in favour of that, yeah?
Yeah.
And then we get some quote for this base, yeah, okay, I think we're on that, uh, Alan, thank you for that, members. Uh, the next one, item number nine, football facilities, to resume use of the football facilities, aid Cemetery Road. So, I'll hand over to you, Alan, you've got a...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the council already agreed for West End Terriers to resume use at Cemetery Road from the eighth of August. They provided this assessments, they've got proof of from the F A, the council's insurers have been informed, and that's due to start this coming Saturday, I think, the eighth. Um, I know, I think some members did slot some maybe concerns over Covid with regard to that, and it will never be zero risk, but at Cemetery Road, it's, um, it's effectively West End Terriers home ground, so it's, it's, it's up to them to, uh, comply with their own risk assessments for any matches that they have, for example, I would assume that they will, the changing rooms changed, that the people will come changed for football, and they'll go home in the same kit, uh, so that's due to start this coming Saturday, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, they did say that it's a one o'clock kickoff, this football team, it's West End Terriers senior team, they played a game last week, uh, at Doncaster, there were no issues or problems, there's been no repercussions, anything from that, and then they've got an own game this Saturday at one o'clock on Cemetery Road against a team from Southend, so both teams, what, last twelve, uh, four weeks, sorry, uh, month, have been training together in the bubble. Seventeen or eighteen players, and so they'll come, they'll play the games exactly what, what's been played professionally on a similar scale. It's been approved by F A, they've provided the town's work to the risk assessment, what facilities. So, has anybody got any, any say or objections to that?
No objections.
Are we okay to, to support this athletic football, yeah? Okay then, so your next one on this item number nine is Sandy Gate, which, which obviously, it, it, it includes astroturf, use of astroturf, Chris Allen.
Yeah, Mr Chairman, for the members' benefit, along with the grid with the red, there are two. Just to start with, Mr Chairman, the council already agreed for them to use the grass pitch, that's the terrace from the week after the fifteenth of August. But this, these prints here relate to the three G pitch. You'll see there are two, two sets of prints, one is to the end of August, which is only a couple of weeks away now. But the main one that members need to decide on is the one from September onwards. And the first page of that is Monday to Friday, and behind it is, is the weekend. So the one from September onwards, um, just to get back to the bit, on Saturdays and Sundays, there are no issues. Where it's red, that means there's a clash. So you'll see that on the one from September onwards, those that are painted in red, the names up there are those that already have those bookings on three G pitch for several years. But they're also the slots that West End Terriers would also like as well. So it's up to the council, who can have those slots.
Well, mine can be, if I've had the spots for a number of years, then I think it's not going to change then.
If you look at page, if you look.
I'll agree on that.
If you look at page number two. Yeah.
That's the one, but on this one, that's the August one, Mr Chairman.
This is August one, yeah. Has this been booked in, this August one?
The, the red, whenever it's red, whether it's September onwards or it's August, the red ones, the text is the people that already had those bookings from Asavich Bookings, and those are the ones that also the West End Terriers would like. Um, I'm not minimising, uh, or, uh, colliding the ones in August, but that is two weeks to go. It's mainly the one from September onwards that matters most, Mr Chairman.
Yeah. So, what if, there's one, there's one team that's from out to area, which is South Eam, and what they've been doing, using for years, and, and they, they will continue to use it and pay. As end of minus welfare being in touch to use it, Alan?
I don't know, Mr Chairman.
Yeah. I think we should, if possible, you know, keep it as it is, and if anybody drops out, then West End Terriers are wanting to use their slots.
Their refusal.
So give it a perfect refusal, yeah? So we're being fair then to everybody.
Chair, can I also mention that the changing of the Sandy Gate will remain closed though?
Yes.
Uh, simply for the reason that there will be too many teams on there for the council to sense have managed it. But we'd have to have a member staff there, that would have implications as well. That's the difference between Sandy Gate and Cemetery Road, Cemetery Road is exclusively Terriers, one, one, one group, one outfit. Whereas Sandy Gate, obviously, would be a mixture, and it would, to be frank, it would be a nightmare to minimise this, this changing of it.
So, if we're all in favour of that, if you can implement that in writing then, Alan, yeah? And you can just send an outback to their, to these teams that manage us, yeah?
So those bookings are then, Mr Chairman, and Terriers get first approval, yeah?
Yeah, is that okay, yeah? Well, we move on then to item number ten, events to review events for the remaining year. Uh, one of the things that's been brought to my attention with this is, uh, the pantomime for this year. Unfortunately, Stan, they've asked the council that. Yeah, the, the pantomime, uh, people that, that provide this show, that were very good, and I was standing enjoying it last year. Pocket Panto, they've cancelled all the pantomimes for this year, obviously due to this, uh, Covid. The other things are that we've got to probably, I would say, defer till now, till, till the next meeting, there's no rush. We've got funds available for it, it were all budgeted for, uh, there's Halloween, there's Bonfire Night, and then there's other things that, that we usually have, uh, coming up. I'd probably defer then to both progress at next meeting, if everybody's in favour, yeah?
Well, Mr Chairman, that's enough, I think.
Yeah, yeah, Alan.
If I just think, the, the events that would normally happen will be planned. I appreciate the council have deferred it to the committee meetings starting in September. But just so members are aware, we can be thinking about it in the meantime. There's the Christmas Panto's, obviously, which stayed withdrawn from using it. There's Bonfire Night, there's the Christmas lights, and there's the band concerts. Now, as things stand at the moment, if those events were all today, they wouldn't be able to go ahead. But it's just to make members aware of them, to think about it over the coming weeks, and what could possibly do or not do. And just one more, Mr Chairman, more currently, um, at the Lakeside Cafe Bar, the council's already approved to have acts again at the bar, Sunday afternoon, and, and there's one act, I know some members would like, that costs more than the usual one sixty. So as a one-off, Mr Chairman, is it a member's approval, it's the Freddie Mercury tribute, Mr Chairman, is it a member's whether or not to approve that?
Freddie, Freddie Mercury tribute, uh, one, one other tribute act that we had, one to the council's chipped in for that, which on a dual that we had. Uh, it's up to you, what's your views on this, do councils want to chip in again? To, to try and make the difference up, or, I mean, we've done quite well on Sundays, we did last Sunday, you know, we, when we get a better act on, we don't seem to get a better audience, a bigger audience, so, you know, are, are you in favour of this? Or do you, do you want to, you want to, let me take, yes, Dean?
I, I just think, Chair, we made a decision, we said we want to go over that budget, and I think we should stick to that and actually do something. Do what we said we were gonna do, because this comes up, and then, I, I, I don't mind if you want to do some sort of, um, you know, I, I probably aren't willing to, but not to over that budget, because that's what we said. So we should stick to that. Um, and how much is Freddie Mercury for a start?
Three, three fifty.
Yeah, I mean, I know we had, we had shared, but that would already be booked, but we made a decision, and I think we should stick to that decision. If you want to book him and, and get, you know, as long as one six, I said one sixty's not paid, any more than one sixty, yeah, carry on. When it gets paid, one sixty from the council.
Well, it goes out for seven, you know, fifty par, you know, so.
No, but another thing as well, another thing as well, Chair, when I mentioned about Freddie Mercury, is the most outrageous. We've already got complaints from, uh, we've already had a complaint, and, and we've managed to keep that volume down, but his, his act is a light, is a, a, a shouting, it's queen. It's, you know, to get that effect, that's what I think anyway. If you all want to go, you know, against it, and, and whatever, you're back to, you're perfectly, uh, if you want to have a vote on it. But for me, we made that decision, and I think we should stick to that decision.
I don't think we've got an issue with, with cost, because one or two said we'd chip in. But, yeah, there might be an issue with volume, but we'll, we'll just have to.
We'd have to go over them, because that, Jamie, that, I, I heard him on Bonfire Night. I didn't really hate him as such, I just thought it were a lot of shouting. I just don't want, you know, I just think it'd be a problem for us as well to have him. And, and let's be honest, acting having it hard, and obviously slash the face, but, you know, if you go and do it, you get that anytime, so they all like to do the Sunday afternoons, and then they can double up on, uh, and, you know, and go somewhere else, let somebody know. But I, I'm not bothered, I'm sticking to what I, what we agreed, and that's one sixty.
I think he'll bring a, a bigger crowd than as what, as what tribute act to share brought to him.
Yeah, but look, look what happened to share though, uh, Jim. You know, we were full to capacity. We were full, I mean, under normal circumstances, but we've got this Covid as well, you know what I mean? You don't, but you can only do so much behind the bar anyway to save them. So, you know, it might be sad, that's my opinion.
Yes, Ian.
Uh, just a day we were to Jean saying, David, I think, to, to stick to the budget that we've agreed on, but the concern that I have is because Covid at the moment is hardly affecting the surgeons, all of it, and this Covid restrictions down to Waterborders, what I would have to do is, is not to get the ticket, because we can't let it go. That's, that's the only, the only reason, and I just think that if we agree with it, to stick with it, and perhaps Gary can actually help us with the agreement, and, you know, the quality.
Well, it's with, it's with his band, he's booked in on Bengebar's contract. Uh, I think.
Yeah, but none of that's going, it's not going ahead, is it, well, next year, that's not.
Yeah, well, he's booked in next year. Uh, I just think this, you know, coming back to March by, uh, so, you know, it's like anything else, it's each, each's choice. It's possibly for a, for a younger audience, or people that like that type of thing, some people don't like share. And then one or two people that, that we spoke about, that said, will you be getting, uh, Mercury on? Uh, they said that they've made the difference up from one sixty, so obviously that's why it's put on the agenda tonight. But at the end of dates, your calls, what, what you all think, yes, Dean?
Yeah, again, what, what I'm getting, what I got, what Gina and Liam said, yeah, I agree that we shouldn't go over the budget. But from what you've said as well, uh, people are willing to make a difference, it's not costing members that council more than one sixty. I don't have a, a preference, as long as we don't personally pay out half the funds.
Yeah.
What we've agreed.
I'm not, I, I've said, I've just said.
I know, yeah, yeah.
I'm not, I'm not against him coming in once, but I'll tell you now, I'll tell you, I won't be, I won't be, I won't be doing, uh, checks on volume, because I know the fact that you always get, they don't like to sing quiet, because they don't have the same effect. That's what we're doing, that's why, and the songs, singing songs around, Jim, I've just got concerns about that. And also, I don't want to go over the budget what we agreed, and, and that's it. The other thing I'm gonna say as well, before you move on to that, what, I don't think any events are gonna go through this year, because the numbers are doubling now in Wakefield for Covid, and we might even be back into lockdown. Even Scotland now, the folks in my shop.
No, it's only, I believe.
Well.
I believe.
Well, I believe in Scotland then, um, you know, but what I'm saying is that it, it could be used. I don't think, we've already missed the, um, uh, the seaside thing, seaside event. I don't think Bonfire Night's gonna be good to wear anyway, because I could, I wouldn't be controlling that. We couldn't, we couldn't control it, the busy fireworks, it's the big crowds that we get. I can't see anything going ahead, uh, this year.
More on that, is it not, I don't see this guy, if it's as good as what he says is, and Jackie Nambu got Martin obviously. But if we're going to encourage a big crowd to come and see this guy, surely we want them not to comply with Covid? We've, we've got capacity, we, we, we kept, we kept people in the bubbles, we kept people seated, they were two metres apart. There were all lawned area, tables were well spread apart, there's fruit at lake, and we didn't even go overflow to outside at lake. So if we keep it to that, you know, I, uh, that's what we'd already looked at on, on the risk assessment. But if members, you know, it's three weeks from now, if members want to pull it, then I can afford them, I would assure that, and, you know, if, if, like council officials says, uh, pull it, that's up to you.
Jamie, you know, we said when share went on, people were getting to dance, had to get security to, to stop them from dancing. Even to, even share, even share encouraged them to dance. And she, she, she said, if they're ever dancing, what, what's going on with that? She shouldn't have been told straight away when she said that. She should have been told straight away when she said that. But anyway, that's the good thing, what I'm saying to you is, uh, obviously I saw it, uh, with share, well, now I spent, yeah, I spent three hours behind her to, to help them get carried out, because they were coming to, to near us at gate. So, you know, I helped them out, and, and yet it, it was a good turn out, and yeah, we had, um, we had good, uh, you know, it, it takes us, we're good for, um, you know, for Cafe Bar, but I just think we, uh, he, he's gonna be around and, well, I should take, stick to his budgets.
Mr Chairman, guys, just coming there, this is for members' benefit, just to, just to confirm and clarify, that the risk assessment that I drafted for the Cafe Bar has been reviewed many times, but then when the council decided to turn that act on again, I reviewed it and amended it again. And one of the amendments to it was that there will be no audience participation with the acts, and that the acts shouldn't say to the crowd, you're joining in the scene or dancing, that's a complete no-no. That was on the risk assessment, but the risk assessment was sent to the manager of these artists, who said he would send it on to them. So that shouldn't be happening, I mean, I wasn't there on that day when share was there, but that shouldn't be happening at all. It should be the act singing, and if people want to, they come under their breath, that's one thing, but for people to start singing, that would have Covid implications, and dancing as well, that's why nightclubs are closed at the moment, isn't it?
Well, I'm only saying, so, you know, that, that.
So basically then, to, so to move progress, then I think the vibe from here is that we don't have any, yeah? Are we all in favour of that then, yeah?
Yes.
That we'll leave it for now, yeah?
Yeah.
Or you'd be proud of it. Yeah, there's, there's not be against it, but I mean, at the end of the day, you know, we've got to think of things, so. Put another act in there if you want, or you can leave it. So then, if we move forward to thirty next one, uh, which is obviously an event, it's not going to.
Jamie, just to remind you something, could you say, what, what could you say, so, if we don't have an act? So, I, I would, let's get straight, I would continue with acts till end of, end of the summer holidays. Um, uh, that, that budget, or what you're saying, we don't have any acts?
No, what, what I'm saying is we've pulled Freddie Mercury.
Right, so I'm getting, getting one in.
We've tried to get him to pull another one in.
Yeah.
The only issue that you've got to think about are people, people, and, you know, uh, and it, and it is a, you know, when, when, when they've been up performing, but they, they, they don't do things. Security, security went to them and asked them to stop and sit down, and we did our best.
I like that, yeah, but. I'm trying to show them practice.
Yeah, but what you've got to think about then, if that, if that's case, then to save that risk, you've got to consider then, do you do it, I don't have your phone.
Well, you know, my, I think it's that anyway, Jim, I always said, we've got the trade in the summer anyway. We've got the trades, we've got a jukebox, we've got the, so, sight music outside, it's not, you know, I'm just trying to get it right, what we're doing. I'm not bothered if you don't have acting again, because when it's Sunday, we've got the clientele, we've got the people in. And, and so, you know, I'm just saying, if we're carrying on with them at that budget, then fine. If, but if you're saying, we'll, we'll knock them off, then that's fine.
No, what, what I'm saying is, we're always gonna have, like you said earlier on, you're damned if you do, you're damned if you don't. And, and obviously, with it to provide this service, that's what we invested money for, what, what community, so.
Yeah, but you know, you know this, Jamie, we've got people videoing it, that really are not with us, and then they're trying to make something out of it, and that's the problem as well.
No, I'd like to, um, remind the agent to get the act not to include that, so.
Well, it was supposed to.
And we have sent it, like, with it.
They're all, they're all made aware of that, this assessment.
I may send a reminder, just in case, possibly, she's aware it's not on the message or.
But they're all, they're all made aware of that. So look, to move progress on this then, are we all in favour, again, another act to replace Mercury? Carry on, uh, till end of, end of this month, and then re, review it, review it, just make it school on, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah? Just to be on safe side, you know, to keep things in place, if we can record that, Alan, please, yeah? Uh, number eleven then, coronavirus contingency committee to approve and reaffirm the decisions taken by the coronavirus contingency committee. Approved by this council, yeah?
Yeah, because it's confirmed, Mr Chairman, that when the lockdown starts, about before, back in mid, mid-March, uh, for practical purposes, the council set up this committee, from the C C C for ease of reference. Um, so the council will have a, a small, um, uh, committee that could still deal with council business during lockdown, consisting of all chairs and vice-chairs of the council. Um, that committee met to start with, we had one or two physical meetings before lockdown actually started in, in late March. And then since then, roughly over two weeks, we've had online meetings of that committee, so that council business still turns over. Whatever business it may be, could be allotments, could be dance, whatever it may be. And that has, I take on board, council officials' point, that there could be a second wave, but as things stand at the moment, the C C C, that committee, has servant's purpose, and that the regular committee cycle of meetings will start again in September. The leisure and finance policy, that sort of thing. Not that the committee can't, there is a way to the future, if that's what the council wants, but as of now, it looks like it has its servant's purpose. In which case, just as a matter of good practice, it's good for the full council to, uh, approvingly affirm all the decisions, literally every one of those decisions that the committee's made in the past few months.
Yeah, I'll, I'll propose that, we're gonna send the, are we all in favour then, get members, yeah? All in favour, I'm a hundred percent, yeah, I'm in this, yeah? Uh, item number twelve, general review of council's operations, Covid, to review council operations, review the latest Covid guidance, Matt, you've got it.
Uh, yeah, just to, just to, um, reassure members, um, risk assessments go over all our, all our services and properties. The latest one this week is about wearing masks in community centres. As of the eighth of August, this Saturday, members of the public. As of the eighth of August, this Saturday, members of the public must wear masks in community centres. When, in the context of the council, uh, staff and councillors aren't members of the public, but the government still advise them to wear masks. So hence, you might see the signs up round the building, the same goes for the Fixwellam Centre, um, so members of the public must wear masks when in community centres from this coming Saturday, Mr. Chairman.
So, I would say that it's, it's your choice, if I'm correct, that like councillor Wilson.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, he, he had the choice of wearing it, wearing his mask or, or, or not, and that, that's same for others. Uh, item number thirteen, councillor committee committee meetings arrangements, to consider whether to want, uh, further hybrid meetings or solely online meetings when the cycle of committee meetings resumed. Uh, well, what I, what I propose with that to move forward is that, uh, we, uh, we continue until further notice on that, yeah?
With hybrid ones, Mr. Chairman.
With hybrid ones, yeah, you know, to keep people safe, because you never know what's gonna, what's gonna happen the next few days. Yeah, can we have a vote on that, uh, are we all in favour of that, yeah?
Yeah.
Well, then we'll move on to item number fourteen, which is exclusion of press and public, members of the public and the press are to be excluded from the considerations of the business of a confidential nature as per Public Bodies Admissions Meetings Act nineteen sixty. So I thank you all, members of the public, for your attendance, um, on Zoom and Facebook, and I hope to see you again in the near future, stay safe.
Okay.